...entry and I'm happy to kick off excentuete the positive for those of you who've never been to a board meeting. So there's probably most of you, we like to start off with some exciting stuff that's going on in the district and I'm happy to report that Brent will talk a little bit more about this later, but we had a great meeting today in our ad team and we're just really excited to start this year with some extra support. So I wanted to share with you appreciation to the district and to the board for supporting hiring of TOSSs at the elementary and middle school level. These people are super fine educators and I'm really excited about the direction the district is going with a really heightened sense and keen focus on instruction. So I'm super excited to report about that. And then mostly, I'm here to tell you about summer school because last week we wrapped up our elementary summer program at all three of our elementary schools. So first of all, there's many teachers out there. So I wanted to say a huge shout out to like our teachers and our staff, the district office, custodians, everybody who really worked so hard to pull that off. We were compiling numbers and we ended up serving 430, 430 kids this summer. It's remarkable. We've never been able to do that. So that was really awesome. And just to share us some highlights from the elementary program, all of the third through fifth grade, students got to have some visitation from Road Valley Farm to school. They all got to take a field trip out to the farm at SOU, kindergarten and second through second grade, got visits from Jackson County Library and The Bug Guy, which was a big hit. Maria's here. She's our migrant, migrant ed person for the district and she put on quite the program with Bail Efe Florico, Camp Invention, Talent Maker City. Somara's gonna talk more about that. And then last but not least, just a huge shout out to our partners at YMC and Boys and Girls Club. I mean, the amount of work that went into this summer school program was huge, but we really have to make an exerted effort to just say thanks to those guys. I know for a fact that serving 250-plus elementary kids saved those people, our families, tens of thousands of dollars in childcare. So just thank you to them on the record. I'm gonna kick it to Somara.
Hello. My name is Samara Geyers and I was hired to help out this summer as the acting secondary administrator. I have had a wonderful time and I'm so grateful for the opportunity to come out and do this. Our middle school session ended in July, at the end of July, the same time the elementary session ended. We had an awesome final hurrah on the last day. We did a good old fashioned field day, tug of war, relay races. One of our teachers, Peter Dany, he actually had been building solar cars with the students all summer long and he launched this race. So he had this giant championship race. Mr. Berry came out and acted as one of our judges. So we had three different categories. We had speed, we had artistic design, we had engineering design that these, that our middle school students were able to put together. Talent Maker City designed custom badges or custom medals. We were able to engrave, engrave the students' names on them. It was wonderful. It was a great day. Some of the other things that we did in the middle school program, our teachers put together their passion. We had a fairy tale class where the students wrote stories. We'd had a class where they did vision boards. We had another class where they were doing Lego robotics. It was awesome. We had so many great things going on. We partnered with Talent Maker City. At the end, I'll show you guys some of the products the kids have built that I brought down as samples. But Talent Maker City did things like laser engraving, blacksmithing, those beautiful murals that are lining the walls back there. Our kids actually painted those this summer. They didn't design them. They painted them based off of a contest that was done earlier in the year. We did construction. They made mosaics and games, which I'll show you in just a second. It's been awesome this summer. We just started this week, our second high school session. We're doing a credit retrieval portion and we're also doing a freshman orientation. Some things we're doing for the freshman orientation, our field trip got canceled this week for, for smoke, but we're doing a community service field trip out on the greenway next week. We're gonna go again. Today, we were very loud for the admin team meeting, sorry, as we were doing an amazing race tour of campus. And then we also spent some time cooking. We used the culinary, the new culinary down there. We made cake pops earlier this week. Mr. Walker came and enjoyed cake pops with us. So overall, it's been awesome. We have one more week to go. This summer's been great. Thanks, guys. And I'll pass it to Shauna.
Thank you.
I don't really have that much to say other than just welcome everybody. It's good to see all of you. Good to see all of you. My name is Shauna Schlief. I'm the principal at Phoenix Elementary School. And man, it just seems like we broke for summer, but we are really excited about kickstarting this new year. Heather alluded to this a little bit, talking about hiring of our TOSSs, but I want to say thank you to the board because we're also adding some additional positions that have been funded through the SIA dollars. One of those is a behavior specialist that's gonna be helping at our school and at Talent Elementary School. So we're excited to have that position along with numerous additional IA support within our classrooms to help alleviate class size and just have added support for teachers and students. On that note, we are still hiring. Hiring has been so, such a joy. We've had so many wonderful candidates that we're bringing and onboarding onto our campuses and we still have a lot of positions available. So if you know of anybody who is interested in working in the Phoenix Talent Schools, please check our employment page. And then just last but not least, we have learned a lot about new strategies and ideas that we've had to embrace due to our current circumstances. And so we're really excited about taking what we've learned and making the best of it and moving forward with that. We spent today talking a lot about that. And so I'm just eager to begin a new year full of lot of hope and excitement to service our students, all of them on campus. And so yeah, that's it for Phoenix Elementary and I will pass it over to either Tiffany or Kurt wants to come up first. Kurt.
Thank you, Shauna.
Thank you.
Smart enough to use a mic. Good evening, Board. Madam Chair Watson, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm Curtis Shank, principal at Orchard Hill Elementary School. And welcome, everybody that's here tonight. Thank you for joining us. Being the last elementary, I don't get a whole lot to say because I've already said a lot of it, but I did want to mention a couple of things. One is, I want to give a shout out and thank you to Orchard Hill teachers and staff who did the summer school. The other three have talked about what an absolutely phenomenal experience for our kids. And I was in there several times during the sessions that were going on and it was just really a joy to watch them and watch the teachers enthusiasm to work with the kids and help them out. So I want to give all those staff members a shout out. I want to also mention that Orchard Hill is incredibly excited about this upcoming year and the changes that we are going to now be receiving or hosting, housing one of our TLC classrooms, our special need classrooms. So I got to experience those classrooms at Talent Elementary when I was there for many, many years. And just to have those kids coming on our campus is a thrill for me. It's great to be back with, working with them and have them in our building. So we're very excited about that move within the district. So that's a positive for us. And then I just want to say, Shauna and Heather both have mentioned this, but we are so excited about the opportunities that we've had over the summer to be reflective on last year and start really mapping out the things that we think are gonna be phenomenal for moving forward and being focused this coming year with what we've learned from the last year and, and what direction and support we've had from you guys in the district office. Being 30 years in this profession, the support is by far the highest I've ever experienced and seen in my career. And so I am just absolutely thrilled about what the possibilities are out there for us. So thank you, Board, for your support. And DO, thank you. And that's it. I think we're gonna have Kent Valiers up next. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the Board. My name is Kent Valiers and it's a pleasure to be the new principal at Talent Middle School. I've got five quick things to share with you, highlights that have been going on at the middle school. First, I want to go back to the spring and highlight a group of about 10 staff members and Lisa Rollman, our new assistant principal, who put together a great new schedule for the middle school that will give lots of kids a lot of varied opportunities to explore during their middle school years. And I know that Jen Souza is here and I want to thank her. She was the parent representative on that board to create our new schedule. Number two, great news for the lovers of the arts, which I am one. Talent Middle School now has a full-time band teacher. We're excited about that and we're looking to grow that program and matriculate those students up to high school to continue the, the good program here at the high school. And Don Price was a Talent Middle School parent who participated on that selection committee as we hired that person. Number three, Julie Stenson, Cassie Gannaway, Rich Hobbins, Derek Rodman, Lisa Rollman, and Jamar Boyd. All these staff members spent a considerable number of hours this summer brainstorming processes and strategies to help our students and support their well-being as they return to school. As you know, obviously, our community's recovering from some devastating fires and we want to be ready to, to help our middle schoolers be successful. Number four, we have a new athletic director at Talent Middle School, Dave Johnson, and he's coordinated a summer weights program at Talent Middle School. Anytime a student can be in school, any month, it's a great place for them to be. Lastly, I want to thank John McAllope and the custodial crew. Got some new paint in the hallways at Talent Middle School, some nice upgrades, aesthetic upgrades to the parking lot, and we're ready to start a year full of pride at Talent Middle School. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Tiffany Lambert, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I was supposed to go after summer school, but I was kind of heated over here because I, I have a tree branch. One thing I wanted to mention about our summer school and thank you to our summer school staff was that we did try a fully inclusive program this summer. So our students with special needs were included in the regular classrooms and it was even more successful than we anticipated it to be. So I want to thank the, the general ed staff and the special program staff that made that happen. I want to recognize the community for participating. As a school district, we're always trying to get our, our community to be engaged with the school process. So thank you for coming. And it's because we have such a supportive community that we were able to get through last year, not only navigating a pandemic, but also a devastating wildfire. So I wanted to share with you a special project that our, our fire survivors did from the middle school and the high school in summer school this year. They worked with Talent Maker City and an artist, Rick Evans, to create these amazing manzanita branches. And a manzanita tree, when a fire happens, the seeds come and they actually can, can root and grow back stronger. And so we chose the manzanita tree for this purpose. We created several of these branches. We, not me, the students, they're amazing. And they will be placed along the greenway and at each of our schools. We're also delivering a branch to the Saniam Canyon School District and McKenzie River. They also experienced fires on September 8th as a, as a symbol of resilience and our support. So I'm really excited about these. The students also created some interpretive signs to be on the greenway that will last for years. Just a symbol of rebuilding and, and hope. And so I really want to thank Talent Maker City, Rick Evans, the Ashland Community Hospital Foundation for paying for the medal and the signs for the special artwork. I'll have it back there if you want to see a closer look at them.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. Madam Chair Watson, Toby Walker, Principal, Phoenix High School Community. Thanks for being here tonight. Tough to follow the manzanita tree. What a beautiful story, but lots of great things happened on the pirate ship. It looks quiet now, but it won't be in about a month. I want to recognize John McAllope and our maintenance crew moving items around. Our remodel is taking place. We're a shade behind schedule over there. We've had to shift and maneuver. Our maintenance crew has been fantastic. About two days ago, there were pole vault pads right where you guys are. Those were relocated probably six or seven times. So John, thanks to you and your crew for that. Sam talked about summer school a little bit. I do want to highlight the credit retrieval. We had over 35 students this summer show up for two weeks of credit retrieval, which is fantastic. Our kids obviously had some learning loss last year. They've committed to summer. They've made up credits. And I want to recognize Celine Fairmont for leading that crew and getting those kids to show up on a daily basis when they want to sleep in at summertime. Last but not least, or a couple more things, sorry. I want to highlight Sam Geyers coming into a new district, new staff, teachers, getting the summer school program up and running, using all the resources she had around her. Has done a fantastic job with our freshmen. It's called Pirate Camp. Might be something we need to continue in the future. And thanks to those incoming freshmen who decided to attend, because that's, they have a leg up on the rest of their crewmates. Last but not least, in about a month, we'll be welcoming over 600 students through those doors for the first time this building has been open. That's something to celebrate. So excited to see all those students walk through here, go to their classes, see their teachers, have a normal school experience, the best that we can. I can't wait to see them here. Our staff can't wait to see them here. And we're just very grateful for that. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Is Amy from Sedexo here?
I have not seen her.
Anybody from the Board?
Amy from Sedexo's online.
Oh.
We don't have that set up.
I'm sorry, Amy. We don't have it set up to do online tonight.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
No, it would be just in person.
Right. Anybody, Sarah?
I just want to say, just reiterate what Tiffany said. Thank you to the community for being present tonight. I don't think I went to a school board meeting until my son was a junior in high school. So really excited to see the kids and the families here. And also, I just, I realized in the last couple of weeks that, and a lot of the teachers or admins, I apologize, alluded to it, that we're going to get to have a full five-day, full-day school year for our students in Phoenix Talent Oregon this year. And I just don't think that that's something that we want to minimize. I think this last year's been very challenging and I am very excited about the opportunity that students are gonna have in our district this year.
Thank you, Sarah. Well said.
I just wanted to wish our fellow Board member, Rick, a happy birthday. It's good to see you. And thanks for being here today.
Thank you, Michael.
That's dedication of service right there.
If I may.
Yes.
I want to greet my daughter, Catherine Nagel, who is visiting from Ojai, California. So if Phoenix Talent, we give her a big welcome.
Any other Board members or staff? I would like to also say thank you guys all for coming. This is something we usually don't, we have maybe three people on the audience. So it's nice to see a lot of people in different places. So please bear with me because we usually don't have these many speakers. So it may take me a minute to get it ready. Are these in order of? Okay. What? Are these in order of parents? Sorry, we're getting organized. Thank you guys for your patience. As a reminder, if you wish to speak with citizens' comments, you've signed up already, I hope. This is a meeting in the public versus public meeting. Any comments from those during this will come under public meeting laws. Comments will only be heard during the allotted time of the agenda and please limit your comments to three minutes. We have so many people that want to speak. And we're opening the session for 30 minutes. We usually do 10 to 15, but we've doubled the time tonight. The Board cannot hear in public complaints directly towards an employee. Those complaints must be go, go to the immediate supervisor of that employee. We're not, sorry, these were from last time. When I call your name, please come to the microphone. Please state your name and if you're with an organization. Michael will be timing this for us. You will get three minutes. When you get, when you have 30 seconds left, he will hold up his blue folder so you know that he has 30 seconds. And we are really gonna ask to do three minutes so that everyone that wants to speak can speak because we feel it's important to hear from everybody. We're going to have families with children in our district be able to speak first and then staff and then citizens who are citizens of Phoenix Talent and the outlying areas. And then if we have time, other people who are not within our district can speak. We ask you to be polite and please do your clapping after someone speaks and don't interrupt, let them speak and don't interrupt. Thank you. So first up is Erin Borrow. And I apologize if I say your names incorrectly. Please correct me.
Andrew.
Oh, thank you.
No worries. Try to, don't start it yet. Let me adjust this. Got a lot to say. No. Okay. Good afternoon, members of Phoenix Talent School District and school board members. I want to start off by thanking school staff for their self-dedication to our children and selflessness to the children of the Phoenix Talent School District. With that, I have a few questions and statements. When you were voted in, did you take an oath of office? Please send an email response to that. Knowing this, that you have a duty to protect and support the Constitution, when the governor mandated an emergency, did, did all of the previous rules and our rights go out the window? Our children's rights in our constitutional republic are at stake. As a parent of the school district, I want to bring our voices, I want you to bring our voices and represent the voice of the people. Please let Salem know and the Oregon system of higher education know that the parents want parent choice as it is the rights of the parent for the mask mandate. Kids are not getting severely ill. If the state is around 75% vaccinated, why, why are we punishing the children? That's not okay. If the adults are vaccinated, why are we punishing the kids? Our children are suffering mental disorders from wearing masks such as anxiety and depression. According to Professor Yvonne Cosart of the Department of Infectious Disease at the University of Sydney, face masks become non-consequential and due to the function, do not function after 20 minutes due to saturation. Those masks are only effective so long as they are dry. And said, as soon as they become saturated with the moisture in your breath, they stop doing their job and pass droplets. We all know the kids mess with their faces. They touch their faces. So there's no way to prevent this stuff from spreading around. It's gonna spread. Let it do its job. Like that's what, it's a virus. We've had viruses since the beginning of time. Psychologically, we've been through enough. We lost our homes. I lost my home. I lost everything. We lost our homes. Our lives were upended due to the Alameda Fire. I love this district. I want my kids to stay in this district. The mask mandate is just another added mental, physical health hazard. To see my children and others' children adverse reactions is both mentally and physically disturbing to the mask mandate. Thank you for everything you guys do though. Seriously. Thank you, teachers. You guys make the difference in our children's lives. The teachers make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Kevin Christmas.
Thank you, Board, for everything you're doing and thank you for listening to the public speak. I assume that all of you are wanting healthy, resilient children and you're, you're doing this because you love kids and it's not just about a paycheck. So a healthy immune system, a robust immune system should be allowed for these kids to survive and thrive. And to put kids in masks is abhorrent. You can't do this. They're not getting the oxygen. The science is there. If you want to follow the science, follow how this is harming the children. Last, sorry. Last year, we helped to facilitate 13 kids in a pod where we taught homeschool ourselves. We will do that again, but we don't want to do that again. So let these kids go back to school. Let them have a normal life. Let their immune systems grow the way the parents want their immune systems to grow and be robust. So please, listen to the public. You don't have immunity to the litigation that would come down. The pharmaceutical companies are immune, but the people that are making these decisions right up to Kate Brown are not. And so please pay attention to the people in your district who want the kids to go back to school. No masks, no shots. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Bradford, and I can't read the last name. I apologize for that.
All right. Greetings, everybody. And greetings to my friends in the audience. Love you. This is how you do it. All right, school board and everyone else. I'm sorry. I don't know all the names. It was good to hear you voted in and it was good to hear you recite the oath. I presume all of you took the same oath. If you honor that, if you honor that, as my friend, two sessions before me, just said, "The laws, the codes, the statutes of this land did not suddenly disappear when a Kate Brown or a Newsom, or a nuisance decided to call emergency powers." They didn't disappear. They're all still in effect. And so you are obligated by that hierarchy of law. And at the top is actually God's law. Shout out to you. At the top is God's law. Whether or not you believe in God, it's okay. We can use Creator. We can use Source. We can use oneness. At the top is God's law. Then there's man's law. And there's nature's law. Then there's man's law. And the law of the land derives itself actually from the Bible. Everyone around the world, at its root, is the Bible. All of this comes from that. And you are obligated to that hierarchy of law. And so when a low-level governor's mandate, a requirement comes down the pipes, a requirement is just language. It doesn't mean I must. The only thing I must do is not hurt my neighbor and not do harm to my neighbor. That's my only obligation in my life, is to love thy neighbor as thyself. That's it. It is not your responsibility to watch for my health, nor is it anyone else's. I am responsible for that. Now, all of you, here's my email address, maskfree@tutanota.com. You're gonna have to figure that out. I've put the Ashland School Board on notice along with 24 other parents, including right up to Governor Kate Brown, with a host of codes and statutes that they are violating if they deny my son and our daughters free and equal and same access to services at these schools. All of you, right now, write it down on your phone. ORS339.288. ORS339.288. I will read it to you right now. It's from the Oregon Revised Statutes. Prohibition of Use of Certain Restraints. One H, as in hello. Here we go. It's a good one. "The use of the following types of restraint on a student in a public education program is prohibited." We all know what prohibited means, right? Does it mean it's allowed? Yeah. Are you ready? Dot, dot, dot. "Any restraint that impedes or creates the risk of impeding breathing." It's right here. And guess what? It was passed, that actually, that updated language was July of 2019. My time's up?
Your time is up and you can also send comments to the Board through our Board Secretaries.
So you got my email address. If you want this, you know where to find me.
Thank you. Next up is Dawn Casey.
Hi, I'm Dawn Casey. Thank you for saying what you said. I wanted to give you my time. Come on up. You can have my time. What you have to say is very important.
I'm sorry. That was very generous of you, but we cannot allow that.
Boarder, we will not have the meeting interrupted. Thank you.
It's okay, you guys. Okay. It's okay, you guys. Okay, I'm Dawn Casey. I have two kids in this, two kids. And I was born and raised here, went to high school here. And I just want to see the school board stand up for our rights, for our freedom of choice. Up to Kate Brown, yeah, we might take some fines. Yeah, you might get fired, you know? But you gotta stand up for our freedom, right? Okay. You have to. Okay, so I don't want to send my kids to school here. Okay? Don't want to. Try not to cry because it's hard, right? Who can take care of their kids and work, right? They need to go to school. We can't do it, some of us. They need that education. We can't all homeschool. Okay? Divide the classes if you have to. If some people want to think one way and some people want to think that way, stand up for that, okay? stand up for that, okay? If people want to do this, or they want to do that, that's freedom, right? So if someone makes their kids wear masks, okay. If some don't, divide the classes. Take that to Kate Brown. Take that to Kate Brown and fight for us, right? The whole town is fighting. Fight for us. You guys are our backbone. Masks. If you're not wearing an N95, an N95 isn't really cutting it. You gotta wear an N99, right? You can't freaking breathe in that. Right? So it's all mask theater. The particles are so small, they go right through the masks. They go right through the masks. There is no reason. They don't work. Check out the particles. They go right through the mask. Asbestos, the particle sizes in some of the masks are the same size as asbestos going into our kids' lungs, going into your lungs. The science is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Zach Moody. Oh, and just a reminder, when he puts up the blue folder, it's a 30-second warning. So you have 30 seconds more. Is Zach Moody out there? Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to come and talk to you about some pretty important issues. And I think there's enough people here to talk about masks, so I'm gonna yield that time to those folks to talk about masks. But I do want to mention one thing. As we start bringing our kids back to school full-time, I think it's time for the school district, if it's not already in place, to start bringing all of our teachers back to school full-time as well. Bringing them back to the classrooms so that our children can actually have the one-on-one, face-to-face contact with those teachers. No more home teaching. I understand that there are some needs for the students to be able to come and do their in-home training, but there's no reason for the teachers to be at home working anymore. They need to be here for our students. And with the mask mandate, if that continues to stand, and with the vaccination rates up the way they are, there's no reason that anybody shouldn't be back here working. I want to talk to you tonight about this public meeting and the process. There are a lot of people here that want to have the opportunity to speak. And 30 minutes is very great. We're grateful for that time, but we need more. There's enough people here that we could have an entire town in a hall meeting and have conversation and get all of our questions answered and get all of our parents' concerns and our citizens' concerns heard. You can see that we're all participating. We all want to be here. We all want to have, we all have something to say. It may not be the things that the board wants to hear all the time, but we're here to say it, and we're gonna keep coming back in this amount of people if we're not heard. Lastly, I want to talk about curriculum. This is a big issue. Critical race theory and gender identification and other health-related curriculum that is being taught at our school and other schools around the state and around the nation, we believe is unacceptable. I think I can speak for most people. I do want to say that I appreciate Superintendent Berry sending out the email explaining how the curriculum rolls and who we can talk to. But we all know that the critical race theory, regardless of how it's being taught, is being weaved into our education, our kids' education, whether it's through gender identification, you know, other health-related issues, which I won't get into. And we just want to make sure that we have an opportunity as parents to know what's going on. And so, one of my friendly speakers behind me here will probably talk about this, but we have an opportunity, and we have an opportunity to do public records requests. We have an opportunity to sit in classes. We have an opportunity to get involved. And we will come to the classrooms. We will come and watch our students and see what they're doing. We will follow their assignments. We will do the public requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Lisa Jenny.
To read quick, I have a lot to say. So thank you for listening, and I love seeing so many people here that are concerned about our kids and their education. I know a lot of people are here to hear about masks, but I thought this was a great opportunity to speak about critical race theory and what we've learned, what's being taught over these last 18 months that we didn't know about, that now we are aware of. So everything happens for a reason, I believe. With school right around the corner and us not knowing what the exact curriculum is for our kids and what's going to be taught, I feel like there's definite concerns. Yes, recently, an email went out saying that CRT has not been adopted at the Phoenix Talent School District, but it has been adopted through the state of Oregon, which means, yes, it can be taught by teachers if they want to teach it. I have an assignment right here from a teacher at the high school that is teaching BLM curriculum CRT to our kids. And if you want a copy, get ahold of me, and I can send you a copy. It's a 42-page document, and it's terrible. It has nothing to do with an education. Only division. I was also told by this parent that another teacher in the high school said, "All conservatives are terrorists." Yes. I told them they need to file a complaint. I don't know if they have, but this just can't be tolerated, no matter what side you're on. I feel it's a teacher's job to teach our kids a scholastically-based education, reading, writing, arithmetic, math, computers, and not pollute our children's minds with political opinions, lies, and theories. Leave the political and moral issues to the parents and guardians and get back to what school was intended for, in education. Since I asked for formal responses at the last board meeting and did not get any responses back to my questions, I am gonna ask for them here. What is the board going to do to make sure that CRT-BLM curriculum stays out of our schools since it has not been adopted into the district curriculum? Number two, what are the consequences going to be for teachers if they're caught teaching this curriculum to our children? And three, I want a list of all the books being purchased in our libraries. Parents and guardians, I've got to speak quick now, but there's a few different things that you can do. There's called FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act. You can put in a formal letter to the district, and you can ask for a teacher-specific timeframe of emails, curriculum, assignments that they're teaching our children, and they have to, the district has to provide it to you within a certain amount of time. Also, you can file a complaint with the district, go to the district office, and file a formal complaint. And we are gonna be sitting in on teachers sporadically. So if you want to do that, get ahold of our group.
Thank you. Elia Knight.
Hi, good evening. Am I allowed to pass you guys some information? Is anybody interested? It's just another perspective about natural medicine. The reason why I'm passing this around is just to show you other perspectives. Not as doctrine, I don't believe every single thing that I read in anything. I'm a natural medicine provider for children. I specialize in treating kids with natural Chinese medicine. I think the big piece that's being left out here is, are our children, do they know how to take care of themselves? I actually taught a class here, or I came to a class and taught about Chinese medicine a while ago, and kids want this information. They want to know how to take care of themselves. Putting a mask over our children is like putting a Band-Aid over something that's not gonna heal. It's also making it worse, actually, because as we talked about, the lack of oxygen. These kids are growing up as an experiment. This has never happened before, and we're not really taking the long-term consideration of it. Also, vaccinations are not preventative. They're also experiments. They're not even FDA-approved. And it's very shocking that they're actually being given without parent consent. These are still children. Even in high school, these are still children. Their brains are developing. They need to be able to fully breathe. Also, when they're being forced to put something over their face, is that a representation of freedom? Absolutely not. Let's talk about the big elephant in the room right now. The elephant in the room is politics. Why are our children being divided and being forced to choose and make adult decisions right now? It's not fair. It's the role of the family. And, you know, unless we're living in a communist system, which a lot of people see is coming, and I really want to prevent that from happening. All these people here want to prevent that from happening. We want to stand strong. We want to provide the best life that we can for our kids. And so, we're trying to work together and build relationships with people. As you've heard people say, they really appreciate what you're doing for the kids. And we can, we have the power to speak up to our dictators right now. And that's how they're acting. They're literally acting like dictators. And it's not about, like, the labels right now. The labels are being hijacked. Everything's being hijacked. So whatever information you read, you gotta look at both sides, all sides. There's more than just two. It's not just black or white. It's absolutely multifaceted, and we need to consider the big picture. What are our kids' diets right now? What toxins are we facing within our world? And why aren't we focusing on the cures for the bigger problems? The chronic diseases that are taking more lives every day because of horrific lifestyles that we're leading? Why isn't there more talk about that? That's all I'm saying. And I really want you guys to explore this. Basically, what I handed out is talking about pasture, the germ theory, versus a terrain theory, and how what we put in our bodies and how we live is the only real prevention from getting sick. And we have to really understand, you know, history of what's been going on. And we might see more and more people getting sick, but we also have to understand also that vaccinations can shed, and they could shed more dangerous aspects of whatever it is. And it's multiple different vaccines and vaccine companies. So we're gonna see more sicknesses, I'm sure of it. But you know what? We're also gonna have to consider what's going on. What's the holistic picture? Why is this person sick?
Time.
And why was there a 99% survival rate for people for COVID in this last year when there wasn't vaccinations? Thank you very much, and I hope you have a beautiful evening.
Thank you. Chris Luz, please. Chris Luz. I saw him earlier. Oh, Luz, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Chris Luz. I want to thank the board volunteering. I know it takes a lot of time, and I appreciate you. I also wanted the parents to know that about a month ago, I asked Denise Skinner, who's with the superintendent's office, to add more information to the agendas. Now, when you go onto the main site for the school board, you're gonna see the agenda, and it used to be just the agenda topics. Now, when you click on the link on the topic, it gives you all the meeting potatoes that these people see within the agenda and also all the information that regards that particular item. So check it out, click on the links, get some more information, stay really informed. I gotta be careful I put this. I was talking to a neighbor of mine who just celebrated his 60th anniversary. And I said, "Lyle, what's the secret?" Without blinking an eye, he said, "Know when to keep your mouth shut." Didn't blink an eye. Know when to keep your mouth shut. That same admonition can be used in our school system. We have some teachers who, you know, sometimes make a mistake, and they say things that are politically oriented. Like Lisa said a few minutes ago, one teacher talked about a certain political party being terrorist. Another teacher had on the bulletin board a politician's name and them being a racist. Completely unacceptable. I, you know, I almost lost it when my child came home and said, "This is what's happening in the school system." So what I did, I went to the principal, and I went to, you know, the powers that be of the school system, and they're very, very, very accommodating. So if you see your kids, or hear about your kids experiencing something that's inappropriate by teachers, make sure you bring it up to the school board, file a complaint. And I think if there's enough complaints by a particular teacher, something will get done, I believe. I hope it gets done. And that's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mike Sandoval. Mike Sandoval. Either one should work.
Thank you. Phoenix Talent School District employees and beautiful families here. Thank you. Thank you for your dedication to us families after September 2020 fires, first of all. I come to you today not with the concern over COVID, however, with the sexual abuse problem with educators and the education system that's affected us locally regarding South Medford High School. My concern is that there's been a recent sexual abuse problem regarding Noah Scott Berman, who recently pleaded guilty in Jackson County Circuit Court. This man is free right now on 10% bond of $45,000. Under his bond agreement, he was to have no contact with any juvenile. Under a recent polygraph, he was shown to be deceitful and deceptive. He was gonna fight the case, but he failed miserably. Changed his plea. Under his plea agreement, he pleaded guilty. Faces five years in prison with fines of $125,000 for three felony counts. However, right now, there's a plea agreement in place with Deputy District Attorney Zori Cook that this man receives only 90 days in jail. In summary, this teacher who graduated from these grounds, whose job application for employment as a teacher and coach has letters of recommendation from educators here, I too FOIA everything. He had sex with a child. He coerced the victim into a relationship using Snapchat when caught told the victim to lie. He was gonna fight the case as innocent. His reward, not penalty, is currently three months. That's mid-November. Please help write letters right now to Deputy District Attorney Zori Cook or call her at 541-608-2934. Hold one of your own accountable for us. We will work for you forever. God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Machella. She was a late sign-up that came in.
Thank you so much. So, many years ago, I saw a movie called Dead Man Walking. You might have seen it or heard of it. There's a particular scene that stuck with me for, like, decades. I don't remember the rest of the movie, but it was an execution. And it stuck with me in a particular way. The execution was set up with about 12 people involved in a process that ended in the death of a person, but it was designed, understandably, so that no man's act was causally responsible for that man's death. And it was done like this successfully and resulted in the end of that. I'm gonna jump to a totally different subject, connect them. And I'm gonna say what I suspect we all know consciously, strongly, or on some level. This is very real and important. It's, we need something, like, kids will not wear masks to school. That's real, and we need something in life to give us traction. And it's so much deeper, and we know that on some level. And I'm gonna bring up two things to present the evidence that, like, this is off-the-chart bizarre. Masking children all day at school is not supported by science. There's a lot of fear and fixing and ideology, which is completely pointless when you're a little kid at school all day with a mask on. It has to make sense. It has, our kids, has to make sense. It doesn't, unless somebody can correct me on that. The second one is, schools exist for the well-being and the healthy development of children. There's other peripheral reasons, but that is the reason. And it's handy to have a simple, right there, period. If the school were to anchor on that, you come from that, work from that, organize from that, know that, fight for that, be very careful on what you compromise on. It just clears it up, like that. And so, I think we are benefited by calling this radical. You could use that word, obvious.
30 seconds.
Okay, so now I'm gonna bring them around. That situation that I described for the execution, I don't mean to make a comment about that. Abrogating responsibility to achieve a certain result? Ah, that's an analogy that could make you go huh. I think it's every single person's because the organization of responsibility is too chaotic. Whose fault is it? Who did that? Who let that happen? Who's the decision maker? We cannot fix that. It's yours and yours and yours and yours and mine and yours. So that's my Braveheart rally call.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we've got all the parents who've signed up to speak, so we will go to citizens in our community. Carolyn, Carolina Marshall? Or Carolina Marshall, I apologize.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, School Board. This is my first school board meeting. How many people here? It's your first school board meeting. Good, okay. My participation in the Phoenix Talent School District began in 1994 at Talent Elementary School, where my son attended, and I have volunteered ever since. Leadership class, the culinary arts class, not a judge, benevolent food taster, with the choir, but my love is the color guard and the marching band. I just love them. I've been doing it for 17 years. I get to meet a new band director at the middle school. Beginning Band is my most favorite. I'm in a mask tonight, and you've all been lovely to me. I have not, it's been real good. I was a little afraid that I was gonna get, I don't know, something, but you've all been lovely, and I really appreciate that. It was, you've been just lovely, all of you, and I, I'm really glad. Loved the rock and roll. Loved it. I, I'm a rock and roller. And all of you coming out today for the school board, the community, this is what it's about, is showing up. And to show up is really important. Thank you for doing that. Thank you, School Board. We're all behind you a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Vermillion? Oh, sorry, Angie Vermillion, sorry. Hi there.
Yes, Valerie. Auntie Vermillion, Phoenix, Oregon. I attended Phoenix High School, my mother attended Talent High School, my children attended Phoenix High School, and my grandchildren, my grandchild. My grandchild is not attending in the concern that her mother has of some of the curriculum that is being taught, even though we, we are not saying critical race theory is taught. Sex education, some of the sex education materials, in, in coming out of California, there's some that are so vile in a sixth grade textbook that, that is nauseating to parents, and yet it slipped in. So I'm so glad that everybody came, and I think we need to keep coming and, and watching the curriculum. I thank you guys for your time and, and volunteering, like what a service that is. I had COVID, I had COVID in, in November. I wore a mask. I wore a mask. I was in a firehouse for 15 minutes around people that had COVID that I found out six days later. I said, I had a mask on. My family had a mask on. We're not gonna, we're not gonna get it. We all got COVID from the 15 minutes with the mask. With a mask on here, you can smell the smoke through the mask because, and the particles, the smoke particles are much larger than the virus particles. And so I have a little segment I want to read from a neurologist, a leading neurologist out of Europe. She says that rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flood of carbon dioxide. We know that the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. There are neurons, for examples, in the hippocampus that cannot survive more than three minutes without adequate supply of oxygen. Given to such, given that such cells are so sensitive to oxygen deprivation, the functionality must be affected by low oxygen levels. It goes on to say oxygen deprivation can cause metabolic changes that happen in the neuron cells and, and are vitally important for cognitive functioning and brain plasticity. And it is known that when drastic metabolic shifts occur in the brain, there are consequences, consequent changes of oxidative stress. We all know, you know, grab a bag if you're about to pass out, breathe into a bag. Child, breathe into a mask eight hours a day. The acute symptoms, which we all know after wearing the mask for a while, headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, reduced ability to concentrate and reduce on cognitive function.
30 seconds.
What is true is what Dr. Fauci said way at the beginning. The masks are not gonna work. You're gonna touch your face too much. A child is going to touch their face over and over again. We want them not, you know, to wipe their nose and cough in their arm, but they're gonna touch that mask all the time. They don't work. I really hope we can look out for our kids. It's so hard to watch us. And I, I hope everyone shows up and looks at the curriculum and makes sure that there isn't gross coming through. Thank you.
Ryan Mallory?
Hey, guys. You guys are fixing into the sun. This is really cool out here. Take this off because I'm more comfortable this way. Not gonna give you a big grandstand or anything like that. How about that? Okay. Ryan Mallory, and I'm a business owner, and I, I live in Talent. I live in the school district, and my kids did go here for a few years also. I'm pretty interested in the area that I live, having freedom of parental choice with the masks. That's, you're hearing a lot of that today. I'm also not interested in the schools in my district having activism in the classroom. That's, that's a principal and a superintendent and any managing teacher's job to keep out, an eye out for those things and make sure that they are staying on subject. It's pretty important. The masks, I mean, I think you have to listen to the people that live in the district, and you guys are all volunteering your time to be on a school board, and, and that kicks ass. Sorry, kids. It, it's really cool, and that's how the American dream works. And we want parents to have their American dream too. And I think what some folks don't understand is, if you want to wear masks, I'm not gonna talk down to you. You want to protect your health in that way? That's fine. You have some kind of health issue where you should wear a mask because you don't want to get COVID? My mom was in the hospital for it. Let that sit in. I don't, I don't want to lose my mom. She's very important to me. My dad had it. I have a friend that recently died from it. It's a big deal. And none of those people that experienced those pains would have it any different. Even the friend that died, he would want parental choice. So, so right now, we have to kind of understand that you guys have to deal with the organ system of higher education and Governor Kate Brown. You don't have any control over that, but you have an army of people that will stand up for you in your positions, visit your businesses, and hold you up if you're willing to stand with us against this. You can't keep a mask on a two-year-old. You ever been into a rodeo where they grease a pig and let the kids try to catch it? That's what you're talking about right there. It's like herding cats, right? We don't want to do that. And imagine kids with special needs, kids with special needs. You have an autistic kid, you're gonna try to wrap a mask on him? That kid's not gonna be able to come to school. You've just axed him out of the tax money we pay to have him educated with a position that you just filled. So we, we definitely want you to use that position that's filled. It's beautiful that you hired that way. I loved the oath, the ordinance the gentleman has. Those are all on a place called Southern Oregon First. If you look for the Maskless Women of Oregon or a new show called Wake Up, Southern Oregon, it's not, it's not a day show, folks. It's not a morning show, it's a night show. So you take that meeting however you want to. I realize I piss some people off with what I say online and otherwise, but I'm fighting for your freedom too, and I love and care about you.
Ron Converse?
Thank you, thank you. You're a good man. Okay, I, I don't live here, but I live in Jackson County. And one other thing's, well, first of all, I want to thank you guys aboard here. This school is absolutely beautiful. And my question would be, is why did we make it so pretty? And these people out here are the ones that are paying for this school, is my understanding. And so my question to all you people out there is, we all gotta get involved. I heard on the news here a few days ago that, you know, I was in student government when I was in high school, and unfortunately, you know, I'm kind of talking to you guys out here because, and, and myself, but what I want you to do is you gotta get involved. And only 20% of the people get involved. And we need 100%, 80%, 60%, but we don't like this 20%. Now, that's what I, that's how I feel. And there's a few people here that talked today that impressed me, and what I'd like to do is get with, with you people and figure out how I can help better. Fortunately, I'm retired, so I got a little more time. And, but the school here is a beautiful school, and it's for our kids. And the mask thing is definitely out the door. I don't like it. I think that everybody should have the right. If you want to wear a mask on this side of the school, fine. If you want to wear a mask, don't want to wear it over here, that's fine. And I think it's the parents that should have the real right to say what they want to do. This little gal that said that, you know, she was worried about everybody here for a mask, and she wore a mask, and I don't think anybody said anything to her. And I appreciate her for definitely for stepping up here and saying what she said. But we need, as a people here, to start stepping up, sign up, and let you, let's get, talk about it. Not the 20%, let's get 60, 70, or 80% of us. And so I want to get with a few of you that I've heard talking tonight, and I want to get on board. I was, I want to be involved. Let's, I'm not real smart education-wise, but I'm, I call myself straight smart. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The last person I have on the list crossed their name off, and I'm not sure if that was a mistake or if they wanted to speak. And it was Carter Cristo Hart, and it was crossed off. So if you don't want to speak, that's fine. I just want to make sure I'm not making a mistake.
Here in the building. I want to start off first by just acknowledging a gentleman by the name of Patrick King in Alberta, Canada, won in court. There are, and the judge signed off after he gave proof that the masks were full of poison, and the judge signed off, and now Alberta, Canada is free from masks and lockdowns of any sort. Governor Abbott put out an executive order, no more masks, no more lockdowns in Texas. Hallelujah, wonder why? Governor Kristi Noem, South Dakota, never had masks, never had lockdowns. Wonder why? If you do not know that the masks, 80% of them are manufactured in China, does that tell you anything? If you do not know, we are in dire straits and our free nation is at risk, and the mask and the pandemic that they call it, some people call it scamdemic, CNN is not God. CNN and all the media is in cohorts and lying to the public. The real problem is, long time ago, Big Pharma and CDC and Fauci, who has 19 lawsuits against him now for lying to the American people, look it up, are promoting the mask and it's part of obedience, not part of protecting you. The mask does not protect against a virus, period. You're being lied to. State of Oregon is a corporation. Talent, this county is a corporation. I wonder why? Corporations are made to, for a person not to be accountable. The CDC has come out that you don't have to wear masks. You need to do your own research because what's happening is the CDC, run by Big Pharma, did you know that CDC is not a government organization? The CDC is a privately owed corporation for profit. Guess who owns it? Gates and Fauci. We're being lied to, and when the governor, the person acting as governor, is stating that she's following science, that science is false, and it's fake, and it's wrong. God's law is, we are free breathing men and women, and you are inhibiting that. And if any child gets sick wearing a mask, you will be held accountable personally. We have, are working with the, the frontline doctors, and we're AmericansInActions.us, and we are gonna be holding you accountable. Please do what is right. Thank you very much.
I have got everyone on the list. I am closing public comment at this time. Thank you all. We are moving on to the consent agenda, wait, we're moving on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to start by a couple of acknowledgements and, and welcoming people, and thank you for, for being here. Thank you for respecting the process and respecting this public meeting and respecting the speakers as they took their couple minutes to, to share with the board. I realize public speaking is not easy for everybody, and the courage that it takes, I just want to acknowledge out for those who, who spoke. Also want to acknowledge the, this space. You guys have the first sneak preview in, in our whole community as you walk through this amazing commons and this amazing high school. And we really look, we really look forward to showing it off throughout the year. Second thing, and it was mentioned earlier, but it is Director Rick Nagel's birthday, so happy birthday. I asked him if he'd had this many people at his birthday before, and he couldn't remember if he's, if he had. But he loves caramel apples. We have a number of caramel apples for him, and happy birthday, Director Nagel. We do have, we do have, summer school had water bottles for the students, so that was a gift for you, and their summer school t-shirt is a gift for you as well. Just a few things. In your blue folders, you will see the EL report, and there is, it's a requirement to share this report with the, the board before September 1st. And so if you have any questions on that English language learner report, just let us know. Next, and it was mentioned here tonight as well, in your blue folders, there are responses to the questions that staff worked on from last board meeting. And we wanted to, this is our, this is just for those in the audience, this is our first board meeting since then. And so staff worked on answers to those questions, and we will have you peruse those, and then we'll get those posted in a timely fashion. Also wanted to share, and administrators mentioned this a little bit, but we had our ad team retreat today. Our administrators got together. Typically, we do that in June, but we, just with all the things going on, we weren't allowed to, to do that. And so today was day one. And when I say retreat, I mean, we retreated up to the library up here. So it's not necessarily a glamorous retreat. But it was so nice with all the things going on to really have the time and space to work with these amazing, amazing administrators and really start the plan for an amazing school year. I want to finally take a moment here, and I might suggest that we take a recess maybe after this to, to allow people to leave if they want. But, you know, these are very tough decisions. They're tough times. There's a lot of varying opinions and opinions, and you heard tonight the passion of those voices in our community. There are some things that the board and staff need to consider, and in your blue folders as well as a opinion from our legal counsel on the impact of, of decisions. Highlights, well, first, prioritizing in-person learning as we start the school year. Last year, we weren't at that point. We actually were, believed we were starting at hybrid, and then we had to go to distance learning. With any tough decision, you know, there's liability, personal and district liability. There's also, you know, considerations of licensure for staff, and he highlights that in there. Quarantine rules, we will be sharing those with our students, staff, and families, and that needs to be considered when we make decisions. Working with the local health department must be considered. Consideration of the impact on the healthcare system is highlighted. And of course, data, really looking at the data that we have being presented, both statewide and locally, and really within our district. I will share with you, we have a report that, as you know, we were in-person the longest last year. We got to bring our kids back in January. We were in-person learning the longest last year, and we had the lowest rate, case rate in the, in the county. So, that's a celebration for students, staff, and families to make sure that we were following those protocols. So, thank you. It's really never been so evident. You see PTS rising and the motto of being calm, having clarity, compassion, courage, and that is required more than ever. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you all mind if we have a brief recess, so people can be excused if they would want to? Okay, thank you.
Before you take that quick recess, would I possibly be permitted to ask one quick question?
We don't usually answer questions on, but let, let me finish, just a second.
As a moment of grace to me, as a mom of five kids, and just as a public educator, one quick question before I head out.
Can I finish my sentence real quick? Yeah, we can ask a question, we won't be able to answer it during public meeting, but we could get back to you, or you can call the admin staff, but yes.
Okay. My quick question is, I can't help, I've been standing here, and I, I can't help but notice that the, the sign on the door says masks required on campus at all times.
I will be happy to answer that. Well, Brent can actually, probably better than me.
Yeah, so the, the rule that came out today is during the regular school hours, or it came out this week was during the regular school hours. And we'll be getting that out to the families on how we're going to navigate that through athletics and other extra.
I appreciate your clarification on that very interesting rule. And I just want to point out that I know for most of us here, we're not here to convince you that masks are terrible. We understand that people have different perspectives. Whether or not a child has a panic attack, or is deeply depressed, or is lonely, is true whether or not you're convinced it is. We're just asking that you give our small people the same respect that you're giving yourselves.
Thank you. I call a recess right now. Wait, wait. Oh, 10-minute recess.
10-minute recess, and if you want to stick around, you're more than welcome, that you can exit here, or there's also access to exit around the building to the south.
We are resuming the meeting now. If you can, please limit chatter so we can. Next up is the consent agenda. Consisting of approval of the revised agenda, the approval of minutes for seven, eight, twenty-one, and the personnel report that is in your blue folders. Yes, I need a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second.
I second.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Nancy. Any comments? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been moved. First action item is board policy, I N D B, flag displays, and salutes. Brent?
Yeah, we had this for review last time, and now it's on for action, but that's meeting the new guidelines on displaying the National League of Families P O W M I A flag. We do, we had John actually look to see if we have the infrastructure in this, and currently we don't, but we will. We do recommend that this passes, so we move forward with putting the infrastructure in.
Can I just, so the infrastructure isn't, I'll just ask, because even though he said, at the new school, it's not in, it's not making up?
No, and that's, go ahead.
Currently, it's not set up for three flags, but I'm pursuing how to make that happen. I was told that it had to be with the new standard. It should be able to accommodate it, but right now, the way it's set up, it's not. So I just have to pursue how to make that happen. And once it's done, well, you'll see it, but I'll also let you know.
So there's three flag poles at the baseball fields. Is that appropriate?
That is appropriate. You can use multiple flag poles. Our elementaries and I think even the middle school, the poles, basically the size of the pole actually dictates the size of the flag. And so that is what dictates how many flags we can put on one pole.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move the board approve OSB rec, no, is that right?
Yep.
OSB recommended changes to policy I N D B as presented.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Sarah. We will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes. Moving on to action item two, board policy J G G A corporal punishment. Brent?
Yeah, that's just, we reviewed this last time, and I'll just entertain any questions if you have, but it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move the board approve that OSBA recommended changes to policy J G A as presented.
Thank you, Nancy. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Rebecca. Nancy move, Rebecca second. We'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Policy passes. Item three, board policy J H C A slash J H C B immunization, physical examination, vision screen, vision screening, eye exam, and dental screening.
Very similar. It's based on the legislation, and the red language, as you know, is mandatory for this board policy.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move the board approve OSBA recommended changes to policy J H C A slash J H C B as presented.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rick. We'll take this to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It passes. Next, board policy K L public complaints.
Yeah, this is a public complaint policy, and if you see the revised and re-adopted dates, it, this policy comes up quite a bit. This is based on new legislation. This is actually was recommended just for board to review, but public complaint is something that is, you know, right, and I want to make sure that, I recommend that the board actually votes on this policy, and this is required language in that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move the board approve the OSBA recommended changes to policy K L as presented.
Thank you, Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Polly. We'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca? I vote yes. Moving on to annual agenda items.
Thank you for clarifying those and making the changes, some of the changes that I recommended, and reminder that it's just a guideline to help keep us on track, so I appreciate that. And I'll move that the board approve the agenda I N M says presented.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nancy. We'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes. S, next up is the S R O contract for P H S Phoenix High School.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. We have had a longstanding partnership with the city of Phoenix, and we have Chief Boker here, and Officer Hole, who is now our new S R O, and we are extremely excited to have him in our building supporting our kids, so thank you. Thank you for that support. This a little history, Rick was part of a team years and years and years ago when we really started looking at school safety and starting an S R O program in this district, and we have been, this is over a decade now, and it served us very well. The council approved this in the city a couple weeks ago, and I recommend approval to the board.
Madam Chairman, yeah, I go back on history on that with this one, and I'm, again, so pleased to see it. And so I'd like to make the motion on this.
I would love you to, for you to make a motion.
I move the board approve the S R O contract for Phoenix High School as presented.
Can we second it by everyone if we can, but, okay, Rick moved, Rebecca seconding.
I just have, just a quick comment. We live in a world where having officers in schools is under threat. And as a nephew and grandson to, and family member to several police officers in my family, I just want to thank both of these, both of these departments for providing us tremendous officers to be in our school and be a positive impact for kids. So thank you, and I wholeheartedly support this and our agreement with talent as well, so it's exciting to approve this.
And I just want to say kudos to whoever chose Aaron Hall. I'm not sure. Chief Boker, you were part of that. Thank you for continuing to serve the citizens of Phoenix very well, and overall the students in our district. Really goes to show the impact they're making when you get to walk someone to graduation. I mean, that's like the crowning, like, oh, I got to walk someone to graduation. So even after just your first year here, I know you're an alum and have connections to the community, so glad that you're here, and, yeah.
I second that. I, I think if you built your perfect S R O, it would be Officer Hole. For real, like, we couldn't have got any better, so we do really appreciate you and look forward to meeting our talent S R O. Okay, any more discussion before I take this to a vote? Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Definitely, yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Yay, thank you.
Now, the S R O contract for Talent Middle School.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So we've seen so many positives come out of the S R O program in Phoenix, and Phoenix really jumped on board early, and as you know, our district serves three municipalities, Medford, who Orchard Hill actually has an assigned S R O from Medford Police Department that we share with some of the other elementary schools in the Medford School District. And then we have two schools in Talent, the middle school and the elementary school, and we've been working with the city of talent, and we have really prioritized some funds to help support that, and we are really excited to have an S R O in our middle school that also serves Talent Elementary as well. Chief Snook was unable to be here, but she just wanted to make sure that she said, shares that she's grateful for the partnership. She is vetting and working with a new S R O, Ernie Whiteman, who is truly the guru in the nation, I would say, for S R Os, is actually retiring, retiring. He's tried to retire a few times, but simply just an amazing person, and he will still be here to onboard the new Talent S R O. So I recommend approval for that, and, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Do I?
May I?
Yes, I would love it.
I appreciate this opportunity.
It's your birthday present.
So generous.
I move the board approve the S R O contract for Talent Middle, Middle School as presented.
Thank you, Rick. Do I have a second?
I second that. Sorry, Michael, go ahead.
I missed two seconded.
Nancy.
Oh, Nancy seconded. So Rick moved, Nancy second. We'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Why not? Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca? And I vote yes. Thank you, guys. Out-of-state activity trips. Before we start, there was a late add for cross, cross-country for Shasta College on September 2nd, and that has to be added tonight, because as you know, our next board meeting is after that, and it will not be able to be covered by insurance. So, any questions on the travel schedule?
I move that the board approve the out-of-state student activity trips for insurance purposes as presented.
Including?
Including the new modification of, do I need to say it specifically?
She's, she's saying yes, so let's go.
Yes, where was it again?
Shasta College.
Shasta College for cross-country.
Yes.
I second.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Rebecca. We'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We normally have a recess, but we had one, so I say move forward. Is it okay with everybody? Okay. Information discussion, facilities and bond update. John?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. It's always a pleasure. You should have a report in your blue folders from H M K, and I will report on the rest of everything. At T M S, we actually installed some new curb bumpers, and we did the planters in the parking lot, and have been doing some paint on the interior. I believe you heard that earlier. O D P, we did a, earlier this spring, we did a whole new roof. We did all-new HVAC this, this summer, painted the interior and exterior, added some new windows and new flooring throughout the building. So it is good to go. It looks really nice. Phoenix Elementary, as everybody knows, we're right in the middle of a seismic upgrade. We have encountered some material and manpower shortages, some unforeseen conditions, but the project is on track to be ready for staff and students when they return. And it's gonna, it'll look nice, even though it's really just a seismic upgrade. There's also a lot of energy upgrades going, so it should be a good addition to the district. P H S, as was mentioned earlier, the remodel is underway, and we also have run into material, manpower shortages, unforeseen conditions, but we should be on schedule to have it fully open and operational later this fall. The district office underwent a complete HVAC replacement and some new flooring, and will be clear, that should all be completed this week. And I'd like to say a shout-out to my guys, the custodians, the maintenance guys. It's always challenging during the summer, because I throw lots of things at them. We have lots of maintenance items to catch up on from previous years, and my guys are just champs. And then you throw summer school in there, they all work so hard, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you. Any questions?
I just have, well, I have to have one.
If it's about a pool.
John and I already talked about it yesterday, so I'll, you know.
I've got a little blue one at my house.
I saw on the financials, the grants that were listed, but I didn't see the one that, any of the ones for the rising field, and is that because it was kind of not in? We used the interest, right?
We used interest. That wasn't grant. We did get, Dave actually secured donations. That wasn't listed in that. We didn't actually receive any grants.
We did.
Well, we got grants for the lighting, sorry. Well, it was, we got E T O funds and S B eleven forty-nine funds to upgrade the LED lighting through it, but it wasn't specifically for the turf or the track.
We got Elwood Foundation did a, what is it called? Oh, it is a grant, okay. Thank you, okay. Okay.
I think I can clarify. I think what Chris was adding here are like the state grants and the incentives that we get, so that was more private or foundation grant.
And one more. Are we getting lights on the ends? I don't know my directions. You know that, right?
On the north end. I know your concern.
It's not currently in the plan, but we will be looking at it. We are working on the design on that edge of the field, and they've actually started some of the the design for the throwing events and everything. And I don't know if anybody noticed, but they actually put grass seed down on the new multipurpose field, and they've actually been moving dirt every day out in that backfield for prepping it.
Is your pile going down?
It is. Actually, we were very fortunate, the landscaper that is doing the project, he needs the dirt, so we didn't think we'd have a problem getting rid of it. We just thought we were gonna have to pay to transport it. We don't even have to do that, so we really lucked out.
So that goes towards my pool fund.
Careful what you say, John.
Love you, sir.
I might add that just my appreciation for John and his team this summer. As you know, we had such a robust summer school, and his team's been so flexible and just, just so hardworking. I do want to make a cou, a couple things about the H M K report as well. On page four, when we were going out for this bond, it was very important to the board and to the community that local contractors were used, and if you see that last line that is bolded, ninety-three percent of the contracts have been issued locally. That means seventy-six million dollars. And many families may, that may, many families may have been represented that have businesses in our area to, to work on our school, so seventy-six million dollars. You might be thinking, wasn't the bond only sixty-eight million dollars? But again, through John and Chris and leveraging a lot of the funds, we had, the next page is maximizing the dollar for the citizens, Phoenix Talent School District, through grants and incentives and other revenue streams, this bond will have eighty-four million dollars total to upgrade our facility. So pretty amazing stuff, and it's a lot of hard work to really continue to leverage all the funds and all the opportunities that are out there for us. I also want to mention, we love Chris, we love H M K. This was actually at their suggestion to really review their contract with us and how, how needed they are as we wrap up this bond. We have a contract that went through past December, and he presented, John and I, an opportunity, or an opportunity to look at the projects and what we have left on this bond, and an opportunity to actually save a lot of money, sorry. Because, within that contract, to go towards other projects, and they're not going anywhere. They're gonna finish this project, which will probably, with punch lists and all this stuff, take us through October, maybe a little bit in November, but then John's gonna take the lead, which he pretty much does anyway, on the other project, so really appreciate Chris. I know he'll be here in the fall to be recognized, and just really thank H M K.
This is really amazing, because I remember at the beginning of the bond project, we had ninety-eight million dollars in projects, and we knew that that was gonna be a huge ask for our community. And so when we qualified for that four, the four million, I love that it's called the Awesome Grant. I mean, I only ever hear it in a different way than when Chris said it. But we're almost two. I mean, we're closer to ninety-eight million than we were to sixty-eight. So, great job.
I just wanted to say, actually, this morning, I was talking with somebody, and when I walked through the schools compared to, I came here five years ago, if you can believe it's been five years. When I walk through the schools, I am just blown away by the changes we've been able to make in five years. And not all of it's been bond. Like I said, every year, I pick special projects. We do beautifications, we catch up on, on deferred maintenance, and I'm just amazed at how far we've come. Actually, kind of makes me a little teary-eyed sometimes when I go to the schools. And that has been due a lot to your support and my team, so, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you, John. Any other questions? I guess not. Financial update. Do we have one?
The only thing I have is, you know, we do not have A D M security right now. The legislature was working on that last legislative session, and for a variety of reasons, not intentional, it didn't get included. It has full support of the legislature. That day was pretty devastating when people realized that, and we got that phone call. So I just want us to be cautious as we move forward. O D E has pledged support until they can change that in February, but that needs to be really on on our minds as we continue to move forward and make decisions.
Anything else on that? Okay, moving on to legislation and O S B A, O S B A updates. I don't really have any legislation. I think everybody knows what's been happening. OSBA, as you might have gotten an email today, they're having a workshop Tuesday. This one's a little different. You need to pre-sign up. And before in the past you hadn't, if you can't make it, if you pre-sign up, then you will get these slides. I don't know if you don't pre-sign up, if they're gonna do the slides. So if you think there might be a chance or you want to see the slides, sign up. I am 90% sure I won't be able to go, but I signed up just in case that 10% happens. And then I can review the slides. So please do that. And I don't know, Brent, do you want me to talk a little bit about PACE or?
Yes, now is probably appropriate.
Now is appropriate. So I went to the PACE trustees board, as you know, I'm on the, the trustees board, which is a whole new ballgame for me to learn. But one of the things that they are working on, and we talked about, and it's kind of OSBA related, is the OSBA lawyers and PACE lawyers are kind of shared. And they are getting inundated by questions, like they cannot keep up. So if you have a question for OSBA or PACE that's legal, please be patient with them. They're going to be sending out some information about, about that. And they're also going to be sending out information about our liabilities and that kind of stuff. So one of the things the Board of Trustees really wanted to work on was communication. And so please watch out. And I'll maybe in this segment, we'll be talking a little bit so we can be informed what's going on. And PACE, the two major are sex-related crimes and cybersecurity is the, is the two things that are really, we need to be careful in there. And they're, they've got plans. So that is, unless someone has questions? Okay, I'll meet a fire. I don't know if Michael or Brent wants to go first.
I can start. As you know, there are a number of, it's really encouraging, actually. If you go down to Cheryl Lane, apartments that are being built there. All three FEMA housing areas should be up and running here very soon. Coleman Creek, I think, was delayed a little bit, but looking at mid-August. And there's really a lot of other opportunities that will be available to our residents. The Gateway Project is shooting for the fall opening as well. And there's one other deal, I shared last time, I think, that the state purchased 170 manufactured homes. And they are really looking for spots to place those. And there has been not anything formal, but some discussion on what the board wants to do with the surplus land at Culver Field. I think that's something that is still a conversation out there. And if anything is actually, comes to fruition, or there's some discussions that happen, me, Michael and I can start those and then report back to the board on that. As far as Culver Field goes, and this is more of a facility. But John's gonna lead a community group that will involve a number of people from Boys and Girls Club to Little League to a, a number of entities that want to be involved in, what do we want Culver Field to be? What do, that's, that's amazing space for our district. So what, what do we really want it to be? And we'll obviously have board members involved in that. Swimming is a, I guess it's on the table. But there, there is, there's just some opportunity. I think it's really wise for the board to be intentional and strategic with that piece of land. So.
Thank you. And thank you and Michael for both spending so much time on, on housing. And we really appreciate, do you have anything to add, Michael?
I don't. I think that summarizes it really well. They have combined. So there was multiple task force meetings happening and they've combined them into one bigger meeting now. So things are starting to be streamlined. But yeah, I think once Coleman Creek and that, that will be, that's the most populous FEMA site. And so that will be good. And I sure hope it's mid-August because the one-year anniversary is coming up. And we still have a lot of families who are living in hotels and otherwise. So, but yeah, continuing to move along.
Me too. It would be nice to get the families in some semi-permanent housing before school starts. And so then I, that's my hope for sure, is to at least give them a week to, to be in a, a spot so that they can get ready for school. Polly, did you have something to add?
Thank you. I know that what Michael's talking about is the RV3 and the Long Term Recovery Group, are those two groups. And I, for my work, I attend those meetings every other week, I believe, that the RV3 is meeting. And also I've heard about plans for, I guess, apparently something that's been around since I was born, the Talent Harvest Festival is not going to happen this year. But they are going to have commemoration event, which will start on the Greenway. Can't remember the starting point and going all the way down to where, past Phoenix. And then they're gonna have a two-day event. And the second day will be at the Park here in Phoenix. That was burned, hey, help me with Daniel, not with, yeah, Blue Heron Park will be on Sunday. They'll have commemoration there and several recognition of several people who are impacted by the fires. So I'm really looking forward to that. It's a good time to, for people to gather together and to heal after what has happened to our wonderful community here.
Thank you. Anything else before I move on? Moving on to diversity, equity and inclusion, we haven't been meeting, but Brent, did you have anything?
Yeah, just not, just a quick update that Southern Oregon Conference Equity Conference will be later this month. I believe it's the 18th and 19th. So if you want to participate in that as a board member, let us know and we can get you set up. I think it's at Ashland Springs Hotel. And we can let you know the logistics of that. Ashland Hills, Ashland Hills. And then after that, we will reconvene our committee and create a structure for that committee to continue to, you know, work through next year as well. And with a little bit different structure that's more sustainable.
Thank you. Moving on, anything else on that? Moving on to Review Budget Committee vacancies. Oh, what?
Number six.
We went to. Am I looking at? Okay.
Oh, oh, my bad, my bad.
Sorry. I was like. It's Review Budget Committee vacancies, right? Sorry.
Yeah, we have three members that their term is up and we've reached out to them. I'm not sure we've heard back from all of them. But we will advertise that and continue with that process. So those are the three vacancies open. And it is Laura Lotz Speech, Dwayne Robinson and Erica Beck Bratton that we'll reach out to. And if they want to apply again, we'll, we'll let them know. And as you know, many of you may have been budget committee members, which is, you know, kind of a good way to understand and learn about our school district and connect with the board as well. So.
Thank you. Any questions on that before I move on? Okay. OSBA Virtual Summer Comp, wait, yes, Conference, I'm all making sure. No, it's okay. The OSBA Virtual Summer Conference debrief for, normally we had debriefs. So those that went, if they want to do a short debrief on what they learned or about the virtual conference is the time.
I attended, I'll just go first. I attended the Empowering Student Voice, the first weekend, I think it was the SAD, well, anyway. And it was fantastic. And a lot of information and sharing regarding student representatives. So I was really thankful that we already had something kind of in play on having student representatives. And really appreciated that we had the question from Norquist, right? Starts with an L, Loretta Norquist. You know, kind of that question. And I, I feel like going forward, that seems like a good interview type of question to, you know, if you had a magic wand. And we really heard some interesting things from the students based on that. And then some students that were part of this presentation kind of took it to the next level of writing policy or for their district based on things that they were interested and wanted to see happen in their district. So this was more about the process of, of how to do that. And so I just really want to, I guess, look at, make sure they understand that they can, that, and I feel like we did this last year a little bit better than maybe I recognized in the past of asking for their input when we were talking about policy and hearing their perspective on different ones. So I really want to make sure that we keep voting on policies at a time before we dismiss them. So I'm not sure, and a lot of times when we're voting on them, it's at the earlier part of the meeting versus during information discussion. So I'm, I'm not advocating for switching the agenda, but just trying to figure out a way where they can be part of the conversation or having them understand saying could, you know, might be interesting. And from that came, and in addition to having community members come in, really wanting to engage with the board and have questions answered. You know, there's, there's, I personally am seeing a lot of frustration in the formatting of not getting an answer. So one of the things that was suggested was having a community engagement session where community members can be invited and we can help them understand the board process and what a, what a board member role is and what we can and can't do. And then also really hear from them and answer questions. So it's more of an engagement style meeting. So I was really thankful that OSBA has something in place that we could get some guidance and some support in doing that. And Dawn reached out to Janet. And so I look forward to hopefully us trying, I know dates are hard to get on the calendars when you start looking at everybody's schedule. Oh, I've gone over my three-minute warning, I'm sure. So I would just like to say that I hope that we can do that soon. And let the community know that we want to do that. You know, I guess I'm speaking for all of you, but you're nodding your heads. So maybe this is a good thing. So just to try to, try to do that.
Sarah, thank you for both issues you brought up. I support you on both of.
I agree. I think it's frustrating for people to come to a meeting and, and not have been to one and the formality of it and how it's not, it's not a back and forth and people kind of expect that. So I support some listening sessions. And, you know, they can be on specific topics or no topic at all, but just an opportunity to engage in that way. I support it absolutely.
Yeah, I will share, Janet had three dates on hold. And I think Dawn and I took that as they were holding for us, the three dates. So we picked one, but they, she was actually holding it for another district. So we do, she is gonna, I know we have a date out there. Does anybody remember? September 13th, maybe?
September 13th was the day for that she can't make it. But I believe our goal was to do it before we get our board retreat.
Yes.
So that we would be able to use that input when we were making our priorities and, and that. So Brent and I are working with Janet. She has been doing this for other districts. It sounds like a great plan. Maybe I would like to do more than just one. I think Brent would too. So that would also be in our discussion of how many we want to do a year. And the first one would be a lot of information for the public, like you had mentioned. And then take some public input and we can do work, breakout sessions. And she's pretty open. I explained what was, what we wanted and she was, she was on board with that. So I think hopefully soon this week, we'll know more and we'll be able to get that out to the public when we have a date. And it will be in the evening, because I think that works best for everybody is our evening.
Thank you. I appreciate you following through with that and, and look forward to. It's exciting to see community members engaged in their, in their students and in the community, you know, in public school. And so it's exciting to see and, and look forward to, you know, really coming together for the common goal of educating the students and things like that.
Yeah, and it'll be nice, now that we know that we have a big public response, then we can adjust the meeting. Yeah, plan the meeting quarterly so that people will feel, I want everyone to be able to feel heard. And so we'll work on that.
And thank you for taking all of the, those that had signed up prior to the meeting. I appreciate you making time. It, it was a lot. So thanks, everyone.
Anybody else want to talk about the virtual?
Yeah, I attended the racing, the equity question. And again, Dr. Brian Marks is phenomenal. He's so fun and entertaining and just makes his, his presentation style is really favorable to my taste. Probably not to everybody's, but it was really nice. And again, they continue to share the importance of getting education and training for boards, for school personnel administration. And the value of that because we are able to make those guiding decisions to support our families better in a way that makes sense for them. And also the importance of being very transparent, ensuring that there is a sustainability plan and not just, it's not just a one-off sort of education once a year, but really how do we make this sustainable and really active? And they said, they said a lot of really great things. I should have brought my notes. Now I'm saying that like you, Dawn. They said a lot of really wonderful things, but really like having, having a line item in our budget specifically for equity, diversity and inclusion and how the school administration and board is supported and how it, it can really make a huge difference. And the value that it really brings when people are bought into this. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm excited that there is a plan, hopefully, to, to make this work more sustainable in, in programing in a way that it's really gonna be more beneficial and more accessible to everybody, for the benefit of everybody in this school district. So I'm excited about that.
Anybody else? I just want to say that I attended the like new board member session and also the session that Nancy just spoke about. And Dr. Marks said something about bias, which really stuck with me, that he said it over and over again.
Yes.
That we all have bias and we're, we need to be aware of those things that we have bias against. And that if you are living in the world and you have a brain, you have bias.
You're biased.
And that was really profound to me when he said that.
Eye-opening. I remember the first time I heard that statement as well and thought. I never had thought of it that way. So appreciate that.
And he's been to OSBA several times. And anything else before I move on? Okay, moving on to the reopening plan for 2021, 2022.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. We will kind of share what the requirements are. And I first just want to acknowledge not only our whole district administrative team, but you know, Jessica and Tiffany at the district office. And it is, it is a lot to kind of gather and put together and send up to ODE by August 23rd. And you have the same requirements as a larger district. And, but I just want to acknowledge just the time, the intention, the, you know, just the collegiality of working together to get that done. As far as reopening, I, I mentioned it earlier, last year at this time, we, we really had some unknowns, but we, we shifted to distance learning, which was not easy. And this year, we, mentioned by Sarah, five full days a week in person. And so that's nice to be planning for as we head into the fall. A requirement is to do the safe return to in-person instruction and community of service plan. What that includes is we need to have a, a plan for all mental health supports. Luckily through our SIA, we have an amazing partnership with the Clinica. They've done school-based health centers in our, in our buildings and that support is readily available for students. Communicable disease management plan. This has Tiffany Lambert written all over it. She's adjusted it. She's combed through it. She wants to make sure that, you know, what we have in place is, is meeting the requirements and it makes sense. And if we have an outbreak, we can respond quickly. In addition, a requirement is an isolation room and isolation plan. Our, our schools did a really good job of that last year and we continue to have a fully equipped and fully trained isolation plan. And then the last is health and safety. And, and really there's seven or eight bullet points that they really highlight. And one of them is face coverings. You heard that tonight. And I've spoke to many of you and I, I think I echo many across the area that, you know, we do support local control and that, that's not, we don't have that right now. And so we have to plan accordingly. But we will continue to support local control as we navigate through these times. So face coverings, you saw the information from council. That's what we'll have in our plan moving forward is requiring face coverings. There is some flexibility in there for times such as these, not doing during the regular student contact day and some athletic events. So for example, we're moving forward with indoor volleyball. They're starting to practice right now unofficially, but kind of officially. And we have mask optional for that, but really training our coaches to make sure they understand the screening protocols and students, coaches and families understand the quarantining guidelines. Physical distancing, we will have plans that it says three feet when, when possible. Schools will also have, as the weather holds out, outdoor learning spaces to really get, give kids a chance to take their masks off and learn in an environment, you know, without their mask and outside. We do have to battle smoke, as you see. I mean, we were blessed today with the wind. This is, this is why we built this view, by the way, on the comments. This is pretty amazing. Ventilation, you heard all about the bomb project. We have daily our HVAC systems in all of our areas of our school. And that is something the community supported and it's, that's not typical in school districts. So that really gives us a leg up on mitigating the spread. Hand washing, you see a number of stations here and we'll allow time and space for that. On-site COVID testing is a requirement, so we have a plan for that, to do that. And public health communication, making sure we're working with our local public health authority on these. And then the last one is isolation and exclusion. And it's, we had this conversation tonight, actually spoke to a dad who was just concerned about his student with special needs. And there is in the guidance and rule accommodations for students with disabilities. So those families will be able to work with their case manager and the district to see how best supports students with disabilities on any of these mitigation factors that we have. I want to end by just really thinking, I don't know of a better school nurse than Carrie, what she does for us and how she supports and understands our students in schools. And she just, she's an amazing person. She's an amazing school nurse. That's a partnership with Asante. And she has taken some well-deserved time off the next week or so, but we rely on her heavily. So want to acknowledge her.
Do you have questions?
I do.
Okay.
Yes. Brent, you touched on it, you know, one of the things that has, I mean, speaking for myself, that has me so frustrated and I think, you know, you saw it tonight with our community members, is this frustration with a lack of local control. And I think what's most frustrating about it is I don't, I don't think anyone understands what the, what the end game is. So have, have we gotten any indication from the governor's office? What are the metrics? What are the benchmarks that need to be attained in order for us to restore the local control that we were expecting to have going into the school year? Have they, you know, is it, is it going to be statewide or are they going to look at individual counties? Have they offered any explanation of that in the reopening plan? I think it's a good question. It's a good question for board members. It's a good question for staff. It's a good question for community members. And I have not seen any metric that would, you know, release the control back to local communities. I think that's something that, you know, to advocate for and support as well, and, and many are doing that. So because I think just the unknown or the frustration with, you know, not knowing when, how is, is frustrating. So I think I'm hopeful that there will be more direction on that. We do have statewide superintendent meetings that, that share those very same questions. Actually, when this came out, there were a number of questions we had that, that on the, on the rule and the guidance and, and Colt Gill, I will tell you, I've said it before, if you run into him, thank him for all he is doing at ODE. He has a very, very tough job and he understands the role of a superintendent because he was one. And he, he really has his team work on getting clarifying answers as soon as possible. So in, one of the questions was exactly that. So that's a good question.
So they're looking at, from my understanding, each month they'll be reevaluating, but we don't know yet.
Is, you saw, yeah, so they will review it monthly. And, you know, what they, I mean, I'm sure data and case rates and things of that nature. And I, I don't know if, there isn't something solid that they've communicated with the public, what they're going to be reviewing. So, but I expect that to be clarified and hopeful.
And I'm hoping that some of these will come clear on the OSBA meeting because I, because they want you to submit your questions first as well. So these are great questions that you can email in and ask. Because, yeah, there, that's one of my frustrations too, taking away local control and then not having the answers and trying, you know, trying to answer the public and I don't know. And then trying to figure it out. And then, for instance, the math thing, and then it changes again. And it's like, I'm trying to answer people's questions and I don't have the answer and it changes before I can get the answer again. So I think these are all really good questions and something that we all need to ask. Any other questions for Brent?
I just want to say thank you for, to you and staff or for you directing staff to answer these questions from the community. And just having a chance to look through them a little bit. It looks pretty clear and concise and understanding, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, coal mine property update.
Yeah, so as you know, we are in a contract with D.R. Horton to buy the Coal Mine Road property. There have been some developments that they're reviewing right now. They do have an earnest money deadline if they want to continue with the contract of $170,000 non-refundable on August 24th, around there. But something recent has come up on the potential obligation for D.R. Horton to put in or design, I'm not, something about a traffic signal on Juana Paro and North Phoenix, which will need to happen. I'm, I'm not a planning person, but I don't know why that would all be on one property developer. So they're reviewing that. So Thad, as you know, who is amazing, reached out to me this week and said, we might want the board to consider a couple of things with this contract because they are still a very strong buyer. And so one of the options would be to give an extension of 30 days, one month, whatever is feasible to see, have them continue to review that. Another option is to keep that deadline and $170,000 come to the district and negotiate a reimbursement if they want to back out later on. I think that will take a little more discussion. And Rick and I met yesterday and, and I know he's been involved in this Coal Mine Road property and kind of shared the options with that. And what I would ask, it's a little bit time sensitive. We can do a couple of things. We could have an exec session next week or we could have some members of the board, Thad and myself, write a response to how we want to move forward. And what I would suggestion, what Thad would suggest is a little more time because it is a very strong buyer and we want to make sure that we continue that relationship.
So what's happened is they, have they sent us a communication saying that they've come across this? And are they making a specific request or just letting us know that it's come up and they're reviewing it?
They have a couple of different options. One request was an extension and one request was if, if that traffic signal is over $20,000 that they, and they do, do not choose to go forward with the purchase, that they get all of their earnest money back. And that's, that's really the two options that they, they shared. Here's the, here is the kicker, is they don't know what's going to happen. The city of Medford can't just say, I mean, they don't have a proposal or a plan yet in their hands. It may be a mute point. It also could be a $100,000 project that, that developer is faced with. And mind you, we would just have to disclose that to any other buyer if they didn't continue with the contract.
So what do you need tonight? Do you need us to decide on the executive session or a small committee?
Yeah, if you, I mean, if, if you feel comfortable with a couple of members of the board and Thad and myself to do that, to, to look at those, and again, I would say really review an extension and not negotiating any return of earnest money. Really just look at the timeframe. I don't think we're, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I don't, wouldn't recommend and Thad wouldn't recommend getting into a negotiating factor of keeping that August 24th and then seeing about returning the earnest money or not. If the board does not feel comfortable with that, we can see if we can find time to do a, a executive session to, you know, make some, to discuss this further.
Well, to extend, to extend the timeframe for the earnest money, that would, that would have to be something that would require board action, right? Because it was, we voted on it, we voted on entering the sale agreement. So wouldn't that be something that we would?
I'll have to confirm with Thad, but he didn't think so with the threshold, with, with the new threshold on the bond decision, because that's $170,000 and it's under that $250,000 threshold.
Okay.
I mean, through the time, I was going to say, we passed last time giving you authority to do things, so potentially.
Because I asked that same thing and, and I, believe me, I don't want to be making this decision by myself. But I, I really think that is wise and, and looking at an extension, you know, really it looks at 30 days continuing to be on, off the market potentially. And is that 30 days a make or break on the deal? I mean, nobody knows, but.
No, I'm just thinking through the logistics and the, you know, as long as you have the authority, something like that, then I think that makes sense.
I might suggest if the board is comfortable with that, with moving forward, with potentially looking at that. If, if it's not, if, if staff do not have that authority, we'll reconvene and we'll have to get the board together.
Yeah, I would say we need to, I don't remember what the contract, when we approved that, what it talked, what it said about, you know, future decisions and authorities for extensions and things like that. So, yeah, okay.
If it's permissible, I'm comfortable with a small committee meeting to carry this over.
Okay, we will find out, I'll, I will find out tomorrow and then get ahold of people tomorrow on what direction we can and should go and then we'll plan accordingly.
If it's next week, Michael will have to share that because I will be out of town. I could maybe do it virtual, but I don't know. So as long as we can do one extra and I trust what you guys would vote for, so.
And I might just say, I am taking my daughter to school Thursday and Friday, Saturday and Sunday as well. So those days wouldn't be possible, but we'll, we'll navigate through that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Board policy for information and discussion, board policy IIABB and IIABBAR, the use of future feature films or videos or other media. And that is in our policy for review. Did you want to?
Yeah, and it's, you might ask why now? It's been an administrative memo for years and years in this district and staff recommend that it actually is policy. And so we believe that's where it should lie when, when staff members are choosing what feature films to show to their students.
Thank you. Any questions on that? And you can ask again when it comes up. Next is board policy, JBCB, staff conduct.
Yeah, this is just more in line and really more inclusive. There's some language with teachers, but it's, it should be all staff on staff conduct. And so it just clarifies that to meet our staff handbook.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, we're almost done. Review next agenda. The next meeting will be September 2nd, either here in Commons or the library. Am I correct on that? And then we will do essentially the positive citizens comments, superintendent report. We will have a program report, yay, I love those, for summer school recap. We'll do consent agenda. The action items will be board policy IIABB, use of feature films and board policy IA BBR AR, which is the AR for the future films. And then J, board policy JBCB, staff conduct. Then we'll, we will have information discussion, the regulations, board facility, bond update, financial legislation, OSBA, Almeida fire, diversity, equity, inclusion, the personnel, the review of personnel policy handbook, review budget, budget committee applications, budget calendar and discuss student representatives to the board. And then we will, I think we talked about that we might move that, we have the option to move that back if we want to wait till after the retreat. Toby's out there, yeah.
About student representatives, about what?
I was talking to.
The question was about student representatives and we'll get with Principal Walker and see what the best timing for that is to have it on the agenda.
He's shaking his head and giving us the thumbs up, so. And then that is it for that. Anything else we need to add to the agenda?
Can I just make one comment real quick?
Yes.
This, this is, well, a lot of things are new to us lately, but this setup was new to us. And I really just want to thank Thomas is out back here with the sound along with Alan Tappan and his team and Alan Carros to, to really navigate, to make sure we maximized the opportunity for our citizens to participate in this process. And I do want to commend Denise, this was hyperspeed this week. She wasn't sure if she had everything in the blue folders, but I thought it was perfect. It read well, everything was in there. So thank you Denise for keeping us organized. So that's all I have.
I would just say hopefully at this next meeting, we'll be able to announce a community engagement.
Yes, yes. Do we want to add that to? Yes, yes. Do we want to add that to the calendar?
Well, hopefully at this meeting to the agenda.
I mean, yeah, that's what I meant, the agenda. Sorry, I'm getting tired. Do you want to add that to the agenda? Denise, did you get that? Okay, perfect. Thank you. I would like to also thank Thomas. We had the communications person Jake, and then he left and Tom stepped in and has been doing an amazing job. So I wanted to say that. And Denise, you're doing an amazing job as always. So thank you. With that, public, thank you guys for staying as long as you did. We really appreciate it. And have a nice evening. Meeting is adjourned.
All right, birthday cake at Rick's house?
He's got a ton of apples.
Did you lose your apple?
I know, I lost my apple.
Would you like another apple?
No.
I can, I have an.
I know, but you have an entire family.